Land with real life, real life church.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for being a God who is gracious and kind and good to us. We ask your blessing on this meeting tonight, and also on all the city staff and workers, especially those who have been outside, making sure that we have water and the roads are working and all the stuff that we need to get to where we need to be each day. Father, we pray for wisdom and understanding and guidance for all of our city administration and staff as they work to make things smooth and easy for us, the citizens. We know that your word says that civil government exists to benefit and bless the people. And so we just pray that that would happen, Father, that these folks meet, they decide, and would you give them wisdom, understanding, and guidance in all things? We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Corey.
Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation tonight for National Night Out. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, sponsors a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 40th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of El Dorado to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the residents of the city of El Dorado play a vital role in assisting the El Dorado Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of El Dorado and are supporting National Night Out 2024 locally. And whereas it's essential that all citizens of the city of El Dorado be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city of El Dorado. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program, now therefore I, Bill Young, do hereby recognize Tuesday, August 6, 2024, as National Night Out. And I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. A witness thereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed on the fifth day of August 2024. Are there big plans for National Night Out? Come on up and tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, we've got, we're hoping this can be the biggest one we've done as of today. We've roughly around $3,000 in donations from various businesses in town that have donated to help supply the food and drinks and things of that nature to National Night Out. We've got, we've kept everything local in-house, and the, we have, trying to remember their name, drawing a blank. They supplied us with all of our blowups and stuff for all the kiddos that are going to be there. And we're going to have a dunk tank there. We'll have a few officers in it, and then a member from the YMCA that's a personal trainer at the Y will be in the dunk tank, and that's open. Everything's open to the public. Everything's free. Just come out and have a good time.
Where's it at this year?
It'll be at East Park.
East Park?
Yep.
Okay. Appreciate all the work you guys do.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions?
Thank you. All right. So next, we have personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Emerald Ashlock at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. And tonight, we have Main Street here with a quarterly report.
Good evening. Nicole is Mayor, Vice President of El Dorado Main Street, here with Debbie DeBida, President of El Dorado Main Street. We're here to provide the quarterly report. Thank you. So just to recap on the last time we were here to present, if you remember, we gave an introduction of our growing board members. We talked about and laid out our organizational goals. We give information on our promotional focus in the downtown and also provided information on our economic development that we have currently in process. So today, we're going to talk about primarily just four different areas. We're going to talk about organizational capacity, our streetscape beautification, property development, and our volunteer base. The first one that we're going to talk about is our how-to workshop. We're very excited to have the opportunity for Main Street America and Kansas Main Street to come together for an onsite visit to help us with increasing our capacity, our organizational capacity, and working on a transformational strategy to carry forward with elements of the Main Street Downtown Master Plan project, which reflects the city's priorities. So that's going to be on September 23rd and 4th, and we invite you to participate with us. Please mark your calendars. It's very important that we have you there to participate with us going forward on the transformational strategies. And we will have more information on this in an agenda, and we'll provide that for you.
The next thing we wanted to talk about with you guys was the El Dorado Streetscape, the new planter program, or the replacement project that we have that was approved by the city to be funded by the excess sales tax. Funds for the sample planters were donated to Main Street, so we have those ordered. They've been received, and they are now ready to be placed with soil and flowers. So very exciting about that. Very exciting time. Next, we will be collaborating with the Parks and Rec to research quantifiable data to determine feasibility and plans for implementation, working on specific numbers of how many planters do we need, where are we going to place them, as well as including the new implementation and landscaping of the bumpouts in part of that plan that was approved as well. As we continue to move forward, our focus will remain on aligning with the mutual goal, or our mutual goal, of the city beautification. Finally, once we have that completed, a collaborative proposal will be put forward for your consideration, including design, implementation, and of course, future management of that program. As far as around the Main Street table, as we previously mentioned in our last report, we are currently engaged in property-based projects that are approaching the $8 million worth of value range right now, so they are steadily increasing. It's a very exciting time for our downtown El Dorado and its future. We have active projects, including five, two, I'm sorry, five second-story residential developments in the historical contributing buildings, as well as two major commercial restoration projects down on Main Street, and then one Wiffle Ball Stadium. A lot going on. Lastly, we really want to focus on expanding our capacity. We are actively looking for and currently training a handful of new volunteers in key committee positions. Anyone in the committee who has an interest in our historic downtown district of El Dorado in helping us move the master plan forward is welcome to contact us and explore those opportunities. We'd love for others to join our team and kind of push that forward. So feel free to contact us at the information provided, and we'll definitely have great things to talk about. Thank you very much. Do you guys have any questions?
How's the Wiffle Ball Stadium coming along?
It is. It's coming along. Yeah, we're very excited.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah, there's steps being taken that can't really see from the outside, but we're really excited, and we are moving forward with that, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you for what you did.
You might notice the lights and things out there, and then the elevator shaft. We've had some questions about what's on top of the building, the elevators for the elevator. There are things going on that's not quite noticeable, but every day.
It's got to get done now.
Things are happening.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you all do.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, thank you.
So we don't have any other personal appearances. We'll move on to public comments. Persons who wish to address city commission regarding any matter that is under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters, matters pending in court, and land use matters are not permitted. Land use public hearings are held during planning commission meetings. Is there anyone here who'd like to make public comment? As there are none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we're considering the approval of city commission meeting minutes from July 15, 2024, consideration of a resolution adopting the 2024 Kansas Homeland Security and Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan as the hazard mitigation plan for the city of El Dorado and a quarterly financial report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have, I will, for sure, the consent agenda.
A second. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So nothing for old business, so we're going to move on to new business. Gen item number 11, consideration of a resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation improvement bonds, series 2024-A of the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
City, this morning, we issued, or should we sell, bonds for our general obligation improvements that we've been doing over the last several years. And so we have two issuances for you today. We have a long-term general obligation bond as well as general obligation temporary notes. We do have our financial advisor, Tom Calco, on teams. He'll provide a general overview of the process. And then we also have in the audience Mitch from Gilmore Bell, our blood council. So I'll turn it over to Tom, and he can provide a general overview. And if you have any questions, I'm sure he'll be able to answer them.
Hi, Tom.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Mayor. First, my apologies for not being with you tonight. I would have preferred to have been there in person, but it's been a really, really busy day in the Kansas public finance world and trying to cover multiple places. So I appreciate you giving me the permission to attend remotely. You've got a couple of actions in front of you today related to bonds and notes that were sold. I'll let Mitch, I won't steal Mitch's thunder and let him come up after me and explain exactly what you're being asked to do tonight. But you've got actions related to first, $5,940,000 of 20-year bonds that were, will finance various capital improvements. That was decreased from $6,595,000. You may remember seeing that in prior documents. The city did receive a premium bid, means the purchaser was offering to pay you more than the face value, so you were able to decrease your borrowing. That's the reason for the decrease. The notes are $3,870,000 of general obligation notes, three-year notes, that will temporarily finance various capital improvements that will later be taken out with long-term bonds. That likewise had a decrease from $3,970,000. Both the bonds and notes will be paid first and foremost from a special assessments, and if not so paid from special assessments, then they're paid from property taxes, which the city can impose by Kansas law without any limitation. We took bids today at 10:00 AM. We received seven bids from several different investment banks on the bonds. The winner was Robert W. Baird at a true interest cost of 3.275%. On the notes, we received five bids, and the winner on that one was Oppenheimer and Company at a true interest cost of 3.196%. I'll tell you, these were bids that were very competitive based on market indices. As it turned out, the city entered the market on a very favorable day. We had seen a pretty big shift in U.S. Treasury rates coming down on Friday. That had resulted in really good things in the municipal bond market today. To give you some idea of how good the bond interest cost was, a full 1.1% below what we estimated in July. And the notes were about a percent below what we estimated in July as well. As we normally do, we saw a rating. I'm juggling here with one hand, trying to turn the page. There we go. We saw the rating from S&amp;P. S&amp;P did affirm the city's AA-minus rating on your general obligation bonds and assigned that rating to this bond issue. They also assigned a rating of SP1+, or the temporary notes, which is the highest rating that S&amp;P offers. In their report, they cited various strengths of the city. Those include financial reserves and positive projected operating budget performance, so, you know, strong financial reserves and the fact that your budget, you're not deficit budgeting. You're generally seeing some increase in fund balance with your budgets each year. Good financial policies and practices, which is another strength that was cited, and manageable debt burden. So with that, I would recommend awarding the 2024 A GO Bonds to Robert W. Baird and the 202401 Temporary Notes to Oppenheimer Company. I want to, before I relinquish the floor, I want to certainly recognize the excellent work of your staff. They worked hard, do great work to make this kind of success possible, and also, you know, the terrific work of Mitch and the rest of the folks at Gilmore and Bell. They also do great work for you. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Do you all have any questions? Tom, we appreciate it. And you stay safe driving?
Yeah, thanks. Don't worry, I'm not driving now. I'm stationary.
All right. You take care. Safe travels.
Thanks.
Mitch, what do you got?
I don't really have anything other than just the boring mechanics to get you to where we need to go. The action items before the governing body would be a motion to accept, let's, you're going to do the bonds or the notes first? It probably doesn't, bonds on the list first, let's do the bonds first. The action items would be a motion to award the sale of the bonds to Robert W. Baird, pass the bond ordinance, and adopt the bond resolution. That could be a motion to do all three in a single motion. So that would be the appropriate motion for the bonds, if there are no other questions.
Sir, are you ready for that now? I am ready for that motion.
Okay. I move to approve this ordinance number G-1418, authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation improvement bond, series 2024-A of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on said bonds as they become due, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and making certain covenants in respect thereto.
Second.
And then the follow-up would be the resolution actually off, prescribing the form and details.
We can.
Will you second that, and then I do the next part, right? Like you did. That's how the order was on here.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. Then I move to approve resolution number 2989, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation improvement bond, series 2024-A, of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance number G-1418 of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion is second regarding GO Bonds, series 2024-A. Is there any other further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And then the next item would just be for the notes, and we just need a motion there to award the sale of the notes and adopt the note resolution.
Is that the number, the resolution 2990?
That is correct.
Okay. You want me to do this one, Kelly?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I move to approve resolution number 2990, authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation temporary note series, and that would be series 2024-1 of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, providing for the levying collection of an annual tax, if necessary, for the purpose of paying the principal and the interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carries. Mitch, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just like always, we will work with the Attorney General's Office to get the transcript of the bonds pulled together and set up there. We'll get it approved, and then the city will receive funds in connection with closing. All that will be detailed in the closing memo that will be put out and distributed to David and his team. But we look forward to a smooth closing of the bonds and notes on August 29.
Thank you for your help with this and your work on this, and thank staff.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like we've got some good interest rates and helped us out, so.
That's great.
All right. Next item on the agenda. So that was agenda item 11 and 12. So we're going to move on to 13, which is the KDOT, C-Clip, SP Central Avenue, Haverhill to Jones Agreement.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, the city was awarded a project for the millen overlay of Central Avenue from Jones Street on West to Haverhill Road. The project includes a new millen overlay, some drainage improvements near Haverhill Road, as well as some areas that we have need to do some full debt renovation along there. The city was awarded $400,000 of the total project cost. The city, at this point, is estimated to be in the project for $235,797. The city's funds would come from our street sales tax. We feel very fortunate getting awarded this. It's very, very competitive, and it's good to see KDOT investing in El Dorado, so.
Ready for a motion? I am.
A move to authorize the mayor to sign and submit KDOT Form 1302 for the preservation project of Central Avenue from Haverhill Road to Jones Street.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Transportation Innovation Grant Award Agreement.
Yes, this is a new program with KDOT. It's, they have a call for projects, which they did in November 2023, for projects that were innovative in nature, how to improve transportation systems and communities. And right about that time prior to, the summer prior, we had voted to proceed on a payment preservation program. And so in discussions with KDOT, the city went ahead and applied for this innovation grant to help reimburse our costs. We are just now getting that grant agreement, so it's before you tonight to authorize the signing of the agreement with KDOT. The total project cost is $70,000. KDOT will provide $52,500 to reimburse the city, our remaining costs in the project, and then be reduced to $17,500.
Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with KDOT for the Transportation Innovation Grant Award.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Gen item number 15, consideration of the adoption of the standard traffic ordinance and uniform public offense code.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. As it relates to the updates to the 2024 standard traffic ordinance and uniform public offense code, starting in the public offense code, there are four updates, one in disorderly conduct, and the other three are the relation to possession of marijuana and paraphernalia. In the disorderly conduct statute, prior to this, there was a lot more verbiage as to things such as vulgar language, offensive language, and things like that. And it appears that all we've done is cleaned that up a little bit, and narrowed that down to three categories. The first being brawling or fighting, two, disturbing an assembly, meeting or procession, not unlawful in its character, or the use of fighting words. In the possession of marijuana and paraphernalia statutes, that has changed somewhat when it comes to people seeking assistance from law enforcement or emergency medical personnel. If I was out on the streets and somebody approached me that either needed emergency medical assistance from the use of marijuana or controlled substances, they are saying that as, from a law enforcement perspective, that we're not going to charge based on those circumstances. And the same goes with paraphernalia. The changes in the standard traffic ordinance are for fail to comply with citations, and those all come into the penalty phase of that. The charging is still the same. However, when it comes to somebody failing to comply with a citation, the city or the municipal court reports that back to the state of Kansas within 30 days. The person that who has failed to comply with that citation now has the ability to reach out to the Division of Motor Vehicles and request a restricted driver's license, which right now is not an automatic thing. So that's what we have on that. For the other part of the standard traffic ordinance, when it comes to the golf cart ordinance, the golf cart ordinance would not change at all. However, we have a proposal to implement the operation of all-terrain vehicles relating to the operation of all-terrain vehicles on public streets. The definition of an ATV is defined as any motorized non-highway vehicle other than an electric-assisted bicycle 55 inches or less in width, having a dry weight of 1,500 pounds or less, and traveling on three or more non-highway tires. And the requirements for that would be that they must have lights and reflectors as required for motorcycles to be operated between sunset and sunrise. They must have at least one side view and one rearview mirror. They must comply with noise and muffler requirements, and they must have, the operators must have a valid driver's license to operate them. Obviously, they must have liability insurance, and they do have to complete an application for registration with the El Dorado Police Department and keep the registration with the vehicle. The restrictions, they may not be operated on any interstate, federal, or state highway, and the exceptions would be an ATV may cross a federal, state, or public highway, street, or road with a posted speed limit in excess of 30 miles per hour.
So they can cross the road, they just can't traverse it?
Yeah.
Okay. And the golf cart side doesn't change?
No.
Could you go ahead and, for the huge viewing audience, could you go ahead and review the golf cart one, just so everyone understands that as well?
In the requirements for golf carts, they must have lights as required for motorcycles to be operated between sunset and sunrise. They must display a slow-moving vehicle emblem on the rear of the vehicle. Anyone operating a golf cart on a street will be subject to duties applicable to a driver of a vehicle. They must have a valid driver's license. They must provide liability insurance coverage, and they must complete an application for registration with the El Dorado Police Department and keep the registration with the vehicle. The restrictions for golf carts are that they may not be operated on any interstate, federal, or state highway, or any street with a posted speed limit in excess of 30 miles per hour, or as specifically excluded, including Central Avenue, Main Street, Sixth Avenue, Southwest Traffic Way, McCollum Road, and Haverhill Road. They may not be operated on any public sidewalk or bicycle path, or other recreational path not designated for their specific use. And the exceptions for golf cart are, a golf cart may cross a federal, state, or public highway, street, or road with a posted speed limit in excess of 30 miles per hour.
Does that include a restricted license?
So if a person is operating a golf cart with a restricted license, the restrictions still apply, and they must, most of the, all of the time, with a restricted driver's license, if it applies to somebody under a certain age, they still have to have a relative, an adult who is a relative.
Somebody there.
Yes. That is 18 years or older with a valid driver's license.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I've noticed a mistake in our infographic here. We'll get it fixed before we post it, but on the ATV side, the exception says they can't be, they can cross a federal or state highway, and it includes the other portion. ATVs can actually be on any road but the state highway, so the thirty mile an hour thing does not apply to them.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I got that.
Yeah. We missed something, so we'll go back and fix that. So.
The top half.
The only exception is they can cross a state highway. Otherwise, they can't be on them, but they can drive on any other street.
Gotcha.
It's just written really badly.
Okay.
As a whole.
Any other questions for me?
So as we look at. So the potential actions here are obviously a motion to approve the E part of the Uniform Public Offense Code and the STO. Does this, does this fall in the STO then, or do we have to do a separate motion for this?
This should fall into the STO.
We are amending the standard traffic ordinance, so if you read the whole ordinance, the beginning of it removes these sections from the standard traffic ordinance, and then we revise it by.
So by passing both of these motions, then we approve what was sent by the state that we have and the amendments that we've added to it?
Right.
Ready for a motion?
I move to approve an ordinance amending section nine dot zero four dot zero one zero of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and incorporating by reference the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas City's fortieth edition.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. I move to approve an ordinance amending section ten dot zero four dot zero one zero of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and incorporating by reference the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's fifty-first edition with certain omissions, changes, and additions, prescribing additional regulations, providing certain penalties, and repealing prior ordinances.
I will second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Sorry, I forgot to tell Mike this. We are, because we publish on our website now, normally this would be a little faster, but we have to wait for our attorney to sign off on the ordinance on Wednesday, and then the ordinances have to be put in all of the books for the officers, so it will probably be next Monday before the police department is able to start accepting applications for these.
Okay. Thank you, Tabitha, and thank you, Chief, for the information. That's all on new business. We don't have anything under discussion items. We'll move on to City Commission Advisory Board updates. Mr. Tetrick?
We have not had a library board meeting, so.
Commissioner Leach, what?
I'm Evelyn Stacy. I didn't, was not able to attend the meeting they had on the Gold Festival, but I did meet with her here. They've got a lot of good things going on, a lot of good things going on, and they need help. Volunteers. That's it.
We haven't had an EFABC meeting. I guess an update from the EFABC there would be that the football field is track and turf is done. They're practicing on it and will be playing on it soon, so it was a great project, and then stuck within their timelines and got it knocked out, so.
Hopefully, they'll be winning on it, too.
That's the, it's always the plan. And yes, we do have a lot going on coming up for Gold Fest, and I guess if you would like to volunteer or help out with Gold Fest, reach out to.
Volunteer applications available on the web, on Experience El Dorado's website.
Experience El Dorado.
As well as gender application and lots of other information.
All right. It's going to be lots of fun, so. City Manager's Report.
The City Commission has expressed housing as a priority. We got a lot of questions on modern income housing, the Mih program, which is a grant program that cities can apply for. We will have a request for proposals down the street by the end of the week for developers that are interested in utilizing, or rather, interested in putting a proposal together for the city's consideration. The Mih program has not yet been authorized for the fall, but by doing it this way, we can kind of get a jump on the state's process, and knowing that there's going to be more than one interested party that is looking to put in an application from the city's standpoint, this will give us some time to then review those and then make recommendations to the commission, so that we can then submit that to the state when their Mih process is opened. So if anyone is interested in the public, interested in this program, be looking out for that, and we will have that information available on our website very soon.
What's turnaround time on that RFP? Like, how long will that RFP be on the strip? Be beyond the strip?
I believe that we will have it out for about a month.
Okay.
So that's about the time I'll go down for that. Parks and Recreation Department is going to be, they are planning to collect public input on several park areas, typically Forest Park, Rio Park, Legion Park, West Park, and the Bike Path. So they're putting together a plan for getting public input on those areas, and a lot more information coming up, but we encourage the public to start thinking about how we can utilize those parks, so that when we ask for it, we can get some really good ideas to help us frame those conversations. Speaking of parks, the Ballpark Improvement Program, the first phase is nearly completed. The last pieces that remain include irrigation repairs at Central Ball Complex and also installing irrigation at East Park. Obviously, it's very difficult to do that during the summer months, so once it kind of cools down and we hit the fall, the staff will go in and get those irrigation, irrigation systems repaired and or installed, so we get grass growing in those facilities as quickly as we can. El Dorado Lake, so I did want to comment very briefly on El Dorado Lake. I know a lot of people are reading in the paper about Cheney Lake, and they're probably wondering what's the status of El Dorado Lake. Just to give you some data, El Dorado Lake is currently two point three feet below normal. The conservation pool is eighty-nine percent full, and that is from the United States Army Corps of Engineers website. Cheney Lake, however, is seven feet below normal, so very, very, much lower than El Dorado Lake, and their conservation pool is presently at sixty-one percent. So there is a big difference between the two lakes, even though it feels like they're very close in proximity, they're very different in terms of their water sheds and the rain events that actually affect them. So El Dorado Lake is looking pretty good right now, and we will continue to monitor that, but presently, we're doing much better than we were two years ago, about this time. Let's see, we've already talked about the credit ratings. The commission does have a work session on Wednesday presently to talk about the two thousand twenty-five proposed budget. You all recall that we, the commission, authorized the notice of intent to exceed the revenue rate at sixty-seven mils, although I can tell you today that we are floating about fifty-seven mils, so much lower than what we originally anticipated because of that lagging time period, but kind of look at it a little bit harder and bow that a little bit tighter. So we are anticipating that to be, basically, where we're at for a valuation growth standpoint as opposed to exceeding that.
That's, that's the value of this process of passing the notice to exceed, so that we can continue giving staff more time to dive into the numbers and get us, get us to where we need to be. So thank you for continuing that work.
And then we also have an executive session on Wednesday to discuss non-located personnel. And I believe that is all the information I have today.
Okay.
Are they going to be back by Wednesday?
They, well, presently, they are anticipating to be back by Wednesday, but that changes, they may change the work session. We do have a work session scheduled for the fourteenth. This is an unscheduled work session because of the one last week we got canceled, so we do have some flexibility to do that on the fourteenth.
There's nothing else, I consider a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.